If you please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'd like to invite Austin Mathis from Grace Church to the podium for our invocation.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of this city and this community that we get to call home and those who faithfully serve it. We're grateful for our council members, city staff, and all those who work behind the scenes as they serve in often a very thankless and easy criticized capacity. We recognize the weight of their responsibilities and we ask that you give them endurance. We lift up the families that call this city home, the parents who are working hard, children going up here, citizens who have been here for decades, new citizens, and we even want to pray for those who are still yet to come. Ask that you grant them wisdom, unity, and clarity tonight that every decision would lead to the flourishing of our community, not just for the next 20 weeks or the next 20 months, but for the next 20 years and beyond. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Egner?
Here.
Mr. Abrams?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Here.
Mr. Aggraffi?
Here.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Approve council meeting minutes for March 18th, 2025?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Egner?
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams?
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels?
Yeah.
Mr. Aggraffi?
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
We have no presentation, so we'll move into invited guests and visitors, and I'd like to invite Ms. Grody to the podium.
Good evening.
So I received the, uh, I need to say Grody. Um, I had received the scope to the sewer lines and I had asked Andy about if there was any paperwork or documentation or report or anything for that. He said that they were not able to do one, that the camera is too small for the pipe that they were scoping. Um, so is that pipe in fact 12 inches or is that actually smaller like we had originally was told that it was eight inches?
The camera was too small.
Okay.
So it is a 12 inch sanitary line that can't change freely.
So it is a 12 inch line?
It is a 12 inch line.
But because of the design of the pipe, the camera was not able to proceed down through
to hit that nine?
the, through the whole segment that they were looking to scope.
Um, I know we had discussed the first time and I had asked you, does West Harrison's side of the street, because that yellow line, correct me if I'm wrong, is the state line. Indiana's one side, Ohio's the other.
Well, it kind of runs diagonal, but yes.
Ish. But, um, I drive that every single day. Uh, I noticed that there are no manholes on the Indiana side. So is all of Indiana's stuff going into Harrison's water there, into the sewer, and do they have their own storm drains?
That subdivision down there in West Harrison, we supply sewer and water.
So we do have the West Harrison residents for sewer and water in the storm drain, in the storm water?
Uh, so I haven't seen some water, but I know there's sewer, there's a waste water.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think they do have manholes in the downtown and business area.
On the West Harrison?
In fact, they got one, it's not round. It's a, it's like, it's a circle with like an X. It's a weird shaped one. One of the few that isn't round in the country.
Um, did anybody, has anybody seen any more fats or oils in the, in the sewer as you had stated that we were going to keep watching for?
Uh, when we were reporting today, uh, there was no, there was no fats.
No buildup? There was no grease buildup or anything along those lines?
Because I was curious, because there's one business that did close since the last time that I've had a flood in my basement or sewer in my basement, not actually a flood, to now, which this last storm, we'll hold our hands this weekend. But, um, there's only one business that has closed, and as far as I know, that's a pretty dirty business of a lot of fats. And, um, I'm sure a lot of you probably, yeah, it was Huesman's that has closed. Do you think that that could have been part of that? Issue? Not to throw somebody's name under the bus?
Yeah, I, I, I think it would have been very clear if any business was inappropriately dumping fats or waste into our sewer system. And at this time, I have not heard of any reports of excessive dumping beyond
the norm. Average order.
Yeah.
And then, um, have, I know I gave you a 30-day.
Yes.
And I know 30 days was kind of pushing it. Um, I was just wondering what updates we have in reimbursements, what's stopping to keep this from ever happening again? What are we putting in place for that?
Well, I'll have to have some of the discussion later with you, but in regards to the actual segment that is the topic of discussion, uh, what we've done is we've reached out to our city engineers for, um, updated design. I'm sorry, design updates that we could potentially move forward with, options, and potential costs that would be incurred. Uh, that's going to be the part that takes some time, you know?
I understand.
What, uh, Dare Avenue has taken two years to design and it's going to be a complete tear out. Do I expect it to take that long? No, but we are going to have to wait for some further updates to find out. Because what they'll do is they'll come up with some ideas, come present it to us, and then give us estimate, estimates for design. And then we would have to go through the approval process through finance and then proceed with tearing out the street.
Building the house.
Yep.
Exactly. I get it. I understand. I'm, I'm vice president of a company. I get it completely. Um, as far as reimbursements and reimbursing us families that have been impacted completely. And I don't have a big expense because I've not owned this property very long.
Yes.
Um, but I know there are others that have had big expenses.
Yes.
And on a part of it not being our fault and nor if we fixed it, it wouldn't matter, as I was told to get one of those.
Caps.
Well, I have a cap in and it still came up.
Oh, the backflow preventer.
The backflow preventer. I was told by two other people on the department or on the water department that if it gets stuff in it, it may not work and you'd just be sitting here with more stuff in your basement anyway.
Yeah.
It's like you're going to spend $2,500 for absolutely no reason.
Yeah, just like in our discussion, a backflow preventer may work for a short period of time, but as silt and sediment and other stuff build up around it, it begins to either be stuck open or stuck closed, which prevents or presents different problems.
Right.
Um, as for caps, pressure buildup is something totally different.
Yes.
So, um, you know, as for the discussion, you know, the majority of municipalities, uh, do the best that they can in the design of all their systems, whether it's water, wastewater, stormwater, what have you. Uh, the part of the process is care, maintenance, and upkeep. Uh, and Harrison prides itself on, on all that stuff. Um, while we have complete empathy for everything that all the residents are experiencing, um, it's something that we all have to take into account and make decisions on.
Right.
One of the discussions that we will have later is, is the exact topic that we've been discussing for the past two months. So hopefully at the end of this meeting, I'll be able to sit down with you and have a conversation about path forward.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I apologize. Is it Ms. McCann? McCann? Ma'am?
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'm Jeannie McCann. Um, I've lived in Harrison for about.
Do you mind talking into the microphone?
Sure. I've lived in Harrison for almost a little over four and a half years. I lived in Indiana. Um, I moved to Indiana in 2018 after being gone for about 30-plus years. And I moved to Harrison to be closer to the bus stop. I work in Cincinnati. My company pays for me to ride the bus. I live a mile from the bus. I'd have never moved over here if I'd have known I was going to be taxed to death. Every year I get stuck paying an astronomical amount of money for the school levy. And now because you've enacted the we don't get credit for paying to Cincinnati, I got slammed for almost another $500 this year because you only gave me half a credit. My total income last year was $70,052.77. To include the two checks that I had to write in the last couple of weeks for the money that I owed for the school levy and for the city tax, I've paid a cumulative of $13,290.66. My property tax alone included 1,200, or excuse me, included over $1,200 just in school tax. I would rather have additional tax on my property tax than to have to pay a stupid levy tax and get a sticker shock at the end of every tax year. As for the city tax, I don't think it's fair that you're only giving us half credit. And my understanding is you're going to only get, you're not going to give us any credit next year. And after that, I paid in over $1,300 to the city of Cincinnati. So if you're not going to give me credit next year, I'm going to have to turn around and write a check for probably close to $1,400, not to include the over $500 I'm going to have to write a check to the school levy. So I really, and I'll be honest with you, if I'd have known this, I would have never moved over here. But I think Harrison's a nice community. I live over in a condo complex. I'm on my HOA board. I participate. And I've seen people constantly on the Harrison Happenings Facebook page complain about the Rita and everything else. I paid my $512 for the school levy. I got a letter the other day for another $24. It's a penalty. A penalty because I can't have that tax taken out of my paycheck. So now I'm taxed, so now I'm penalized another $24 because I actually paid my tax on time and paid it. So I think if you were to talk to your citizens, you would find out that they're tired of being taxed to death. I mean, the city tax alone and not giving us credit because we work in another city is, is totally unfair. Um, and again, for the school levy, I'd rather you tack an additional 20, 30 bucks semi-annually onto my property tax than to have to turn around and write a check and get sticker shock. So I've just asked that you take it into consideration. Um, I mean, some of that $13,000, those two checks I wrote, that's money I could have spent within the community. I shop within the community. I go to local businesses. I don't go to Home Depot for flooring and countertops and things like that. I go to Kroger to go grocery shopping. I go down to Weber's in the summertime to shop the local farm. So I fully believe in using my local community and shopping small businesses. So I would think that there would be something that you could find a compromise on as far as the taxes, so we're not taxed to death.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm done. I'm done.
First, I do, I want to thank you both for coming in, but I do, I thank you for coming in, um, with the information that you presented this evening. You know, the income tax repeal process took probably six, seven years of discussion. Um, and decisions had to be made to make sure that we could provide the same level of support. In regards to paying city of, actually, let me go backwards for a second, just to make it clear. The school district and the school district taxes and everything along those lines are completely separate from the city of Harrison. We do not make any decisions in regards to the, the school. It is purely just the city of Harrison that these representatives and myself make decisions on, on behalf of the citizens.
Okay.
Um, so I think that's very important to point out. While school systems are incredibly important for the community and a good, well-performing school is important for excellent performance in the community as a whole, um, um, we just, we don't make decisions on that part of it. So in regards to the city, each one of these individuals sitting up here have been affected the same way that you have. Um, I think the only, maybe the only people that would not be affected, and this is a community as a whole, are people that do not have earned income, unless they're over certain levels and everything along those lines. I don't want to get too deep into this, but, uh, earned income. So each one of them are affected the same as every one of our residents, myself included, everybody. So, uh, the battle that we're facing as costs continue to rise and providing the same level of, of service, whether it's our police, whether it's our fire, uh, storm waters, everything, with the rising cost, um, we have to take into account generating revenue to cover those costs. On top of it, with the continued demand on, on activities and items to do, uh, we continue to try to be strategic and fiscally responsible, but provide our citizens with activities so they can be active in their community, so they don't have to go to their cold rain township or anywhere else. While, and understand I'm speaking for myself, I don't want to speak for everyone else. If I'm spending my money, I want it to be here, not in the city of Cincinnati. I do. I, I, I don't want to support Cincinnati Fire. I don't want to support the, the Cincinnati City Council in the decisions that they make. I want our community's roads to be paved. I want our community's police department and fire department to continue to provide excellent service and as our community continues to grow, to be able to add to those departments. And while I despise taxes at any level, any level whatsoever, if I'm paying it somewhere, I want it to be here.
Well, and that's, that's understandable, sir. And I also noticed I pulled up my property tax bill and I noticed that on my property tax, there's no city tax that comes, that is part of my property tax. I would rather you make it part of my property tax than to have to turn around once a year and write a check for an astronomical amount of money that coming out of my pocket all at one time versus, you know, it's already coming out, you know, because my property taxes are in with my escrow account, which is in with my mortgage. So I would rather you tack on an extra $30 to my property tax than to have to turn around and write a check for, you know, almost $1,500 come tax time.
I'm not a payroll clerk. I understand what you're saying. I do. Um, I think that's the advantage of payroll deduction for the majority of your taxes. Not a payroll clerk, not an HR person, anything along those lines, but all my stuff does come out incrementally. You know, the city of Harrison, once we repeal the full amount, it's going to be 1%. 1% of your income broken down over the full year really breaks down to a small amount over that, over the 12-month period, 52 weeks. Um, I would encourage you to make contact because I have had, I have worked in a different jurisdiction where, when I started, they were not deducting properly, both city and school tax.
I.
And after discussion, we did get it set up properly.
No.
Now, if they can't, I, I can't speak to that. I really can't.
No, I, I already, I already have the city of Cincinnati, my federal, my state. I don't have the option to have a county or any other deduction taken out, so, but I would just rather have it tacked onto my property tax and I'm sure a lot of other people would probably rather do that than to turn around and write a big check. Just something to take into consideration, that's all.
I, I appreciate the perspective and the thought in the time this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something on that, too. Um, what upsets me is that the city of Cincinnati can assess 3.5% taxes on the people who live, who work there. Why can't they give a credit for the person who lives in Harrison and works in Cincinnati that they pay in Harrison? Why couldn't that 1% come from them? We don't vote on that. You don't vote on that. They just assess it. And I think that's wrong. I mean, at least with the city of Harrison, and I know people were upset when we said we were going to take the credit away, but at least they have a, a action they can have. They can do a referendum and reject that. But in Cincinnati, you don't have that option and you should. Because Cincinnati, you don't, you don't live, uh, work, uh, live in Cincinnati 24 hours a day. You work, maybe you work there eight hours, but then you're in Harrison without fire protection and our police protection and our streets committee with the snow removal and everything else they do. And I think they all do an excellent job and we have to somehow pay them. And I think that the credit should come from where you work. And that way you do it offset.
I know that was a big discussion during COVID. Um, ah, once again, we could talk about this all night.
Yeah.
It was a big discussion during COVID, but it just didn't work out that way. So.
Well, the state could change that.
Correct. And I would encourage anybody that has those concerns to, uh, contact their state representative. So. Please step up to the podium if you don't mind.
No, so I agree with you, sir.
Speak into the microphone because I can't hardly hear you.
Yeah.
Sorry. I, I agree with you, sir, and I think that in all fairness, something should change. So if you're telling me to write a state representative, by all means, I'll do it.
Yes.
I don't have any heartache in doing that. So if you point me in that direction, I'll be more than happy to. But as it stands.
Check your mailbox.
I'd rather, I, I'd rather go live in Indiana than to have to fork out extra taxes because at least in Indiana, my Cincinnati tax counted towards my county tax for different county. So.
Mayor, do you mind, are you sure your payroll, I have taxes taken out for two cities in my payroll. They can do it if, as long as.
I used to as well.
It's possible as long as your company's willing to do it.
We actually.
I'm not, I'm not going to tell you where I work. I work for the federal government and I only get the option of city, state, Cincinnati tax. That's it.
Have you checked with them? Because they will take it out for two payrolls.
I have checked before when I worked in another place.
My wife works for the county. She has three taken out.
We don't want to get into that. We don't want to get into that.
No, I, I understand, but, but by all means, if you would point me in the right direction, who to start writing, because I would be more than happy to start that campaign and.
Our state representative is Cindy Abrams.
Okay.
If you look up the, the Ohio State House.
Yes.
Uh, you can find her email link directly. She's, she'll, she'll probably come meet, set a coffee date and come meet with you.
Okay.
She is, she's fabulous.
But yes, if you, and if you'd like to explain to me further, sir, later, at a later time, the whole, you know, state controls it and all that, by all means, I'm willing to learn. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Shannon with the Public Library. Good evening, Ms. Shannon. How are you?
Good. How are you all?
Very good. Thank you.
Very good. I'm glad everybody made it through the storms. Um, we are inviting people to join us in April at the library. It's Lego month, so we'll have a lot of fun with different Lego activities. Uh, we're having a treasure hunt with Legos and we're even having an adult trivia night. That'll be our first adult trivia night. That's on a Monday night coming up. Uh, April 8th, we're doing another, uh, program for grownups. It's a HUD certified financial counselor program. It's covering money trauma and why we spend money the way we do. Uh, we're going to learn how to recognize money spending habits and change them for the better. This is going to be April 8th at 7:15. Uh, it's going to go over credit cards, loans, APRs, what goes into a credit score and the effects of a poor credit score. And they're going to also discuss predatory lending and how to recognize it as well as common scams and how to avoid them. And there'll be a question and answer session, um, and snacks will be provided. Um, the program is offered in partnership with the Brighton Center. And then finally, we have a new program at the library this month. It's for the little ones, ages one to four. It's going to be a movers and shakers program. They're going to get to sing, dance, and enjoy music and movement. And no registrations required for the movers and shakers. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Shannon. What was the program, the first?
Oh, Lego. So we're doing Lego month. So we're doing all kinds of Lego activities. So if the kids want to stop in, we have a scavenger hunt with Legos. Uh, we also have a, like a, a Saturday program where they're building together as families with Legos. And then we have an adult, uh, trivia night with Legos and other popular trivia.
Was it the HUD?
And the second one was the?
Oh, the HUD. The HUD is April 8th and movers and shakers is April 9th.
Okay.
The money, yes, I'll be there for that. It's 7:15 with the representative from the Brighton Center.
I definitely encourage everyone to take the time to visit the young and old, the credit counseling, the, the scams theft, uh, especially for our elderly. Uh, more and more, we're running into elder abuse scams, uh, whether it's email, telephone calls, uh, information is knowledge and we need to make sure everybody's informed of these scams, uh, and make sure that they, they stay safe. I've seen too many people lose entire life savings to these scams and it's unfortunate. And then with our youth, more and more people, uh, that are graduating high school and going into the real world don't have the information that they need, uh, to make good, well-informed financial decisions. So if you have an opportunity to reach out to the library, set a time where you can stop out and visit with them. Movers and Shakers is awesome, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the business session. First item is vote on a resolution of the city of Harrison, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Commission of, for the United States Semi-Quintennial, otherwise known as America 250-OH, Resolution 3-25.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abrams?
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels?
Yeah.
Mr. Aggraffi?
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Egner?
Yeah.
The second item is to vote on ordinance amending the amount appropriated to various funds of the city of Harrison.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Uh, Mayor, real quick, uh, these three items relate to a couple of improvements we have going on. There are actually one improvement at the police parking lot. Uh, we have a repaving project uh, where it'll include a dry well replacement, mill and overlay, and sealing and painting of the police parking lot. We have an additional appropriations for $60,000 for additional inspections, uh, that are upcoming for 2025. They're just coming in. The inspection cost is coming in a little bit higher than we thought as the new subdivision on Edgewood is, uh, building up steam. Uh, the last item is an amount for a loan to the CIC for the purchase of the property on Enterprise Drive.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Samuels?
Yeah.
Mr. Aggraffi?
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Egner?
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams?
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move into reports. I do not have much to cover this evening, but one item that I would like to cover, obviously, we have been having some extreme weather come through. Uh, what, Monday, sorry, Sunday, we had tornado alarms going off or sirens going off. Um, one way to get quick information is Alert HC through Hamilton County. Uh, this is through our Hamilton County EMA. Uh, we encourage residents to have multiple ways of receiving alerts and warnings. Um, I point this out because I had to call my mom and let her know that the tornado sirens were going off and, uh, she had no clue as she was laying in bed, uh, getting ready for sleep. So, um, Alert Hamilton County is a mass notification system used to notify residents about emergencies and other important information throughout Hamilton County. So it's not only the weather-related stuff. If we had a major accident, uh, with a chemical spill along the highway, we could send alerts out and this is open to everybody. If you go to www.Smart911.com, you can sign up for all alerts, certain alerts. You can pick and choose what you would like to sign up for. Once again, that is www.Smart911.com. Uh, once again, that's a mass notification and warning system for major weather alerts or any other major event that may be taking place. We actually use it for traffic, um, for major events in our downtown district. Uh, Chief, would you like to add anything?
I was just going to comment on the tornado sirens. So if you, if people weren't aware, that while that warning is active, those sirens will go off every 10 minutes. So it doesn't necessarily mean that there's multiple warnings out there, but it will be continuous for 10 minutes till the warning expires. They started that new process, so I might have noticed that the other night. And then the other thing, tornado sirens, outdoor sirens. And then the other thing, tornado sirens, outdoor sirens are meant to notify you if you are outdoors. You have to have, you're indoors, you need another means. If you're indoors, you need another means such as, uh, Smart 911 or Alert HC.org to get notified on your phone or your TV.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And I have nothing else to report. Mr. Deeters, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I have a, um, some information on some of the streets in Harrison. The Deer Avenue project will begin very soon and is expected to be completed sometime in October or November. Total, uh, estimated project cost was $2,104,000. Uh, we did have a grant for that for some of them, and we got a loan for half, a grant for half and a loan for half. The other three projects, Circle Drive, Weathervein Lane, and Mackey are all projects in the design phase, and they are all supposed to start sometime in the summer of this year. Uh, the Circle Drive is $668,000. The Weathervein Lane is $256,500, and Mackey and Burke is $452,000. Uh, we did have some, uh, questions about the light on, uh, West Road, on the West Road and Carolina Trace connection, and people wanted a stop sign. Our engineers do not recommend a stop sign. They said a light may be warranted, and the cost of that would be about $300,000. Uh, I brought up a question to the street committee about the traffic light at Kroger's at West Road that the left turn signal hardly ever operated. And I've noticed that ever since I brought that up, they must have contacted somebody because it operates pretty well now. It used to be you'd set there if a person was, didn't want to get out in the middle of the intersection, they'd set through the whole light and then wouldn't turn left, and they'd set through the next light. So we, that got resolved a little bit. We also talked about Harrison and Jefferson, uh, and what we're going to do is it looks like we're going to paint off the lines that are supposed to be painted 30 feet. There's an ordinance for that, so that'll take care of that. And the walnut light, uh, wasn't operating very well or flashing, that has also been fixed. And that's my report, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Egner?
Mayor, I don't have a report tonight.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Abrams?
I have nothing to report.
Very good, sir. Mr. Samuels?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Finance Committee met on March 25th. Uh, as always, we did a review of the revenues and expenses and the cash balance. Everything is as expected. It's obviously pretty early in the year, so, uh, we're pretty happy with where the numbers are coming in with no items or nothing to note as of yet. Uh, miscellaneous items, we discussed budget amendments. We, as I discussed before, a couple amendments came forward. And Finance Committee related to the parking lot, uh, for $44,000, field inspection for $60,000. Enterprise Drive, the loan was $750,000. The water rate study, uh, the state, the study has been provided. The Finance Committee has discussed and approved the recommendation from the rate study from UFS. At this point, uh, we are finalizing the schedule, uh, the rate schedule for the next five years, and hopefully that will become, uh, before council probably in May. It'll go back before Finance Committee in our last meeting of the year, or last, I'm sorry, the last meeting of the month. Which, the Finance Committee in April, which will be the last Tuesday of the month. Learned, just learning how to speak, so I apologize. So probably in May, it'll come before council for final approval. Uh, we did have a discussion on the fire department personnel. We did, uh, vote unanimously to support the addition of staffing for the fire department. Although no appropriations were approved, the fire chief and mayor can work out the details of the additional staffing and request additional funding when and if needed. Wastewater landfill, they're moving forward with the installation of a methane monitoring system. At the landfill, the approximate cost is about $30,000. There will be no need for additional appropriations, but Andy did come before committee just to talk about the project. Um, and the cost will be offset because I think they have some temporary, uh, equipment in there that we're paying for on a monthly basis. So this is just a little bit more permanent, but the cost is going to offset. Um, and lastly, uh, we do have a new HR generalist, uh, payroll specialist that did start, um, Ally Rogers. Uh, she is taking over. I think she completed her first payroll. Hopefully all went well, and she's getting ramped up to, uh, take over that process from Kim. With that, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Mr. Acre?
Yes, I got a few things. If you didn't notice, when you leave tonight, look out, the dog park has been refenced and it's all finished. Metro Ford and his crew did a heck, heck of a job. Outside the park, there's something called the Rainbow Bridge being constructed. I talked to Andy Kitchen from OPC, MIA Local 132, the Cincinnati Plasters and Cement Masons Training Center, which is in the old KSC buildings, and they were pouring a dog bone-shaped, uh, concrete pad that either is going to, I'm not sure how this all works with the Rainbow Bridge, but leading to this bridge, and the bridge is to memorialize your pets that have passed or to take your dog there as their, I, I don't know exactly how it works. He didn't know really either, but he was, he was down there, uh, doing the concrete work.
And that's a project of the Rotary Club?
Yeah, this has been donated by the Rotary Club. Do you know how the Rainbow Bridge works? I don't.
The ones, the ones I've seen, the ones I've seen, you leave, um, something memorable for your pet that passed away.
It could be a collar, it could be.
Oh, okay, well, that's what's, that's what's going to be going on there, which I thought, I know how everyone loves their pets. That'll be a good thing. So that's all happening out by the dog park. Over in Village Park, work has begun on the refacing of the bandstand, which I know it was repainted in 2017, but the actual bandstand was just falling apart. It was installed in the 1930s, and, uh, they're putting a new brick facing on it, so. Uh, I talked to Nick from Precision Masonry. He's been fighting the weather like we've all been dealing with, but at least he has his orange construction fencing up now. And he's, uh, began to, he's got to scrape the whole outside and, um, go from there and continue working on that. Last year I went down, I, I spread, um, two pounds of black-eyed Susan seeds in our river park. And, uh, I did notice that a lot of them came up. So this year I went down, I, I put six pounds of perennial wildflower seeds in the park that were, once they bloom, they're supposed to be good for the bees, they're, uh, rabbit resistant, deer resistant. So it's flowers that they don't like to eat, and hopefully those will be coming up as well as the, as the black-eyed Susans from last year.
Six pounds?
Six pounds is a lot when you're dealing with specks. I mean, these flowers are specks, so fortunately I could hobble around the, around the area real well this year.
Wish I could do that in my backyard and not have to mow it.
It was, it covered a lot. I forget how many, hundreds of square feet, six pounds covered. But at least they're out. Hopefully they all come up. That'll be something to see down there. And the only other thing I got is our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for April the 8th at 7:30. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Acre. Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yes, sir. Um, I did want to let everyone know that we have a community-wide shred day here at the community center this Saturday, April 5th, from 10 to 1. So if you're holding old checks, old tax returns, anything you need shredded, please bring it down, and we'll be happy to load it into the shredder for you. That is, once again, this Saturday from 10 to 1. In regards to media and communications for the city, we have engaged an outside communications firm, and we are happy to announce that we are moving forward on enhancements to our communications. This will allow approachable and transparent leadership, new platforms and social media approach, and we will have an electronic newspaper coming to the city. Economic development, we have a public hearing regarding zoning map amendment this week on 4/3 at 5:30, which is this Thursday at 5:30 here at the community center, and the public is welcome. We also will have a public meeting, council work session with American Structure Point, who we have selected to, um, work our five-year comprehensive plan with us. And that is Tuesday, April 15th at 5:15, and that will go about a half an hour regarding the plan. They will also be here, um, all week, the week of Easter. So we're looking at Saturday, April 19th, they will be at the Easter egg hunt, which is from 8 to 11. The district is partnering with the city by donating towards the city new pots and flowers, um, for beautification. We are planning four events with the district this year, including the food truck rally on May 17th and Taste of Harrison on September the 6th. We are working with Andy Sider, our new public works director, as safety during these events is our number one priority. We will be renting additional traffic deterrence for all set events to keep the public safe. We have a grant, um, for Gateway, which is going to help us install electronic message boards throughout the city. That'll be very exciting. Um, we'll be able to get our message out to everyone in a timely fashion. And Mayor, I would like to request an executive session. I believe you have the Ohio Revised Code that we need for the executive session. Sorry, we can come back to that if you need to.
Economic development?
Okay, for economic development project, please. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Very good. I'm sorry, do we need a motion for the executive session? We do, don't we? Okay, so you made the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Acre?
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Egner?
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams?
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels?
Yes.
Very good, so, um, we will move to executive session after our final report by Mrs. Wilson. Thank you. Mrs. Wilson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Pastor Austin Mathis for being here tonight and leading us in prayer. Also, uh, don't forget, this is the first Tuesday of the month, so it's be the one. Please reach out to family and friends to check in on them and let them know that, uh, that you care about them and, and see if, if they're all right, if they got any issues going on. Also, um, Hamilton County Veteran Service Commission is here for all veterans that live in Hamilton County. If you need help processing, processing your VA claim, obtaining a copy of your DD 214, or financial assistance, and then you lived in Hamilton County for the last three years, for financial assistance, everything else they can do for you. Their phone number is 513-946-3300. Also, the Hamilton County Veteran Service Commission is looking for full-time and part-time drivers for their vans. So if you're a veteran, um, that lives in Hamilton County, um, and you would like to have a part-time job, call that same number, 513-946-3300. And that's all I have, Mayor.
One other item that I just want to touch on real quick is we did lose a good longstanding, uh, community member. Not only was he a servant to the city of Harrison, but a lot of our veterans organizations, Mr. Gerald Branditz. I believe his services are April 6th, correct? I believe it's April 6th. But, uh, he dedicated, dedicated his life to serving the entire community. Well, not only from the city, but through junior baseball, Harrison Junior Baseball. I think three different veterans organizations. Absolutely incredible man, would sit down and talk to absolutely anyone. I want to offer my condolences to, uh, his family and friends. So with that, we'll adjourn to, uh, executive session.